We're gonna be live.
I hope so.
You're being live. Puffing stuff there.
Oh, that is awesome.
Man in front of you.
I think.
Why you getting me?
I just texted you.
Sorry, your mother-in-law.
I got it.
You ready?
Yeah.
Okay. That was a shock. I don't know who I'm gonna air break anymore. I'm just trying to talk to you.
I have a video.
Remember I told you Brian, I didn't have on Friday. They don't have it.
Well, that's good.
Turn your phone up. Up to every pretty simple one you measure up always. I didn't believe while they heard you.
What do you want?
Just to call. What do you want?
I tried to call back.
Norman, how are you?
Are you still here?
Unfortunately, yes.
Are you retired?
I'm retired. But my sister did a lot. You say I promise I'll stay. She didn't stay. So I got one year and eleven months.
He's a big contact. I heard you're gonna run for reelection.
No, you didn't.
I did. I did hear that.
You're gonna run.
I heard you're gonna.
You're gonna run.
I don't know anything about that, Jess. That'd be hard. They have a bunch of coworkers. He sold that. I think they're bringing this up to that. Really? Tomato blocks. That was the. Wish I could have been selling that. The great man. Hey, my uncle had the grades in Rat's Lee's down. He didn't know until it was already gone. And they come in, you need to get off the town. Wow. Hey, how are you?
I'm good. How are you?
I'm great.
There you go.
Yeah, when I walked out, I looked at my bag and said, oh, I got one. But I was like, yeah, she's walking in, let her get it.
Did you get a circus?
I gotta take a care of it.
You're a good girl. Hey, good people.
Sometimes. Don't tell the judge that I can say wrong later.
The judge?
Yeah.
She'll set you straight though, won't she?
What's that?
Kay, you did wrong, she'll set you straight.
She got it.
In my opinion.
Kay's never been short of words.
First time by a.
Very few. But at least it was a reason. Is my hair looks okay? I don't have a rose up her own. I might keep it. I get you one.
Do we not have any work done here?
No, they're out there talking.
Marcia's Cheryl today. How's Cheryl's Dean going? It's not good?
Talked a little bit ago. She said she had a couple rough nights last night. And she does that periodically. She's walking on it without even. Not very far.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Basically, it's the best thing ever.
She did her robotic.
Yeah.
And she loved Dr. Perez. Loved him.
I think Jim did use Dr. Perez too, because he's talking about the robotic.
Of Jackie Perry, who used to make it was about half the rehabilitation she having, not near the pain. That's something Cheryl would do.
I'm with this chair. Don't like pain either.
Less rehabbing it, it backs back quicker. It's not quite as invasive.
Well, if you reach in there and do that. See if you can warm that before you're on. Where are you going?
You're just trying to say bye.
Thank you, Sam.
That's exactly right. All right. And I guess it's play, right? Did it work?
There you go. Wait till you turn it off again. There.
Book is on suspension.
Book's there. I don't know, but my way is here. It's good move. I don't think I have one, Martha.
You don't have one?
It is this. Hey, sure. It is this person, right?
I think so.
Okay. I got it. I got yours.
I don't think it's got one in it.
Yeah. Well, unless somebody pulled it out.
It looks like there's an empty hole there unless there's another one right there beside it. There's another one there. There's two holes there.
Thank you. Thanks, Truman. It's all my natural.
I know. That's what I mean. You brought it out naturally.
It's like a white.
I've known you for about twenty years. I think it's going on.
Yep.
See what happens when you do all that hard work while that other treasurer was here?
I know.
Now, you leave about nine and say, I'm gonna go get coffee and then show back up by eleven thirty. Then leave about one and say, I'm gonna go to the bank and show back up by four thirty.
I would.
You know, the county clerk and the county treasurer, when I first started company here, that's what they did.
I would. I would if I could.
I figure that's what, you know, you and the current county clerk do.
No, we're not that fortunate.
You don't pull up your dress and adjust your pantyhose in front of them. Historian.
That's terrible.
That's a funny story.
They were giving blood in the way.
Ever. She still can't.
She's starting to get on the side of her and needs to back down on the side.
She still can't look in the eye. It's awesome, isn't it? I got a lot of county courthouse stories. It's not true.
Some probably wanted to share.
You know, I guess with Jamie. Maybe both of y'all invited me to come and see that district.
How would she get it?
Clerk, district clerk's deal. Give it a shot, John. That's a lot of fun. Maybe they enjoyed it. I had fun with it. Give it a shot. Oh, that was cool too?
You're always entertaining.
I know way too many stories. Bad thing is I don't remember a lot of them. There's an old county courthouse right there. Shows the eighteen eighties, first thing, county commissioners court when they started the meeting. They asked everybody to put their guns up on the table where they could see.
Do you record a lot of them so?
I got all of them recorded, written down.
I mean, voice recordings.
Yeah.
Oh, that's good.
Video, what I'm doing now is I'm moving video. Everything's on video.
That's a great idea. That way you're friends in your room, aren't you too?
Yeah, I am. And when I go to location, I take lots of photos and video. I'm gonna go out on a ranch this week. That's been the same family since eighteen seventy.
Really?
Three sided. It's between Jean and Sherer. You ever heard of that? Sherer is out in the middle of nowhere.
How many acres is the ranch?
You know, I don't really know. Twenty-four. When not a person. It's been the same family since eighteen seventy.
Are they still working?
Yeah. The barn, I really wanted to see is collapsed.
It's already getting there.
Hundred-year-old barn.
I was watching a show on one of those.
I mean, what, next year will be five fifty gallon?
Do wilds and that was. And they re-pick down old barns.
Oh, yeah.
And then rebuild them into homes.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And use that old wood.
Yeah. I have a friend who lives around the barn.
Really?
Up in Iowa. And it's originally a round barn. It's a round wooden barn and they turned it into a house. It's pretty interesting.
Wow, the way they made them when they notched them and made them like Lego coral and Lincoln logs.
Well, in their area, they have a lot of Amish farmers that have been around since mid eighteen hundreds. Really friendly.
My husband was hunting a thirty. He brought up that hand and made a pickling basket from someone sitting outside the road selling.
Sure, sure. Yeah. I bought fried pies that way. Say, boy. Good. Now we can see. Now we can see who you are. Yeah.
It doesn't tell me how much is on there for you.
It's a.
There you go.
Um, it's making. It's making.
What if they coordinated to do that?
Let me lie. Standing on one foot.
Act like a bird. Say go.
Oh, no wonder.
Were you hitting the wrong?
Yes. I even asked Marcia to.
Yes, but I, you had it.
So we'll win this on Marcia.
Okay.
You getting off button? No, I didn't push the on button. Pushed.
Well.
But now I know.
Is it the middle one up there?
Yeah, I heard you too. Yeah. Got a Russia Ranch and Bunnies. Yeah. I consider y'all taking things to do anytime soon.
Not that I know of right now.
Okay. I don't know if y'all would, you know.
Okay.
If y'all need to beat on it, holler at me.
Okay.
You know. Y'all have a good. Appreciate it. Yep.
Young County Commissioners Court allow come to order setting in a record meeting Monday, January the twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-one. It's nine thirty-eight AM. You may note that this meeting was posted in the manner of the time required and that all members of the court are present. And if it's convenient for the stand. Prayer in our presence. Our Father in Heaven, we thank you for this day and for all the many blessings you bring to us. We're grateful for this nation, for this state, for this county, and all the communities here in. We ask your blessings upon the meeting today and that the decisions that the court makes are in the best interest of our citizens that we represent and in accordance to your will. We're blessed in ways that we really don't understand and that we really don't know. We're grateful for all the many persons that stand in arms' way to protect our constitution and rights and the freedoms that we know and have come to love. We ask that you forgive us for all the mistakes that we make, wrong that we do, and we know that you will when we ask. And we give you all the credit and praise. We offer this prayer in the name of Christ our Savior. Amen. Blessings to the United States of America. And to their Catholic religious fans, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On our banner's flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, a state undergone one indivisible. Thank you. Item number one. Got that completed. Item number two. Item number three. Public comments, announcements, and presentations. There are not necessary action items. First thing I have on the list is a proclamation and would have the subject of that proclamation in the courtroom today. Norman? Please come up here and stand where everybody we are on YouTube. That's broadcast live right there. Right over here. Up here. All right. Out of the group, please.
There you are. Stand up for me.
If anybody wants to comment on these meetings, go up on YouTube and our call-in number is nine four zero two two one two one oh seven. If you would like to make any comments, anybody looking or watching on any item that we have on the agenda today. Okay. I'm gonna do honor greeting this to help everybody know Norman Hollis, the his former corporate preacher of Eastside Church of Christ. And he's been very involved in our community for twenty-five years.
Yeah, he's twenty-five years in June.
Yeah, he's a. He does lots of work in the area of history, which he knows lots of secrets on lots of people, I guess you would say. Would you agree?
That's probably true. Always has a story. Always has a story. Yeah, there's always lots of stories.
Uh, he's gonna like call Harvey though, you know. The rest of the story.
Yeah, and my wife tell the rest of the story. Or I start a new story.
Okay, this proclamation reads, whereas the Young County Commissioners Court proud of Young County's historical background from its creation in eighteen fifty-six and through the subsequent one hundred and sixty-five years. And whereas much of the history of the great state of Texas has been here in Young County, Texas, from the establishment of Fort Belknap in eighteen fifty-one to the Butterfield, Oakland, Mayo, and Stages route. The disorganizing of the county in eighteen sixty-five, the subsequent reorganization in eighteen seventy-four, and the organizing of the Stockman's Association, which later became the Texas and Southwestern Cataract Association. Whereas many books have been written as well as many motion pictures using the names of Brett Johnson, Marlowe Brothers, C.C. Slaughter, J.C. Loving, Millie Gergen or Gergen, and Elm Creek Rains, and places like Fort Belknap and Flag Springs. And whereas in each area of time, a person has stepped up to the task of research, documentation, recording of the many historical events, activities, and significant people of Young County. From before Young County was created and through the annals of time, and each generation of Young County citizens turned it up to picture a person to reveal the exciting facts, chronicles, and surprises that unfold. Now therefore, because of the many programs, many, many venues in every part of the county of Young County, Texas, and the hours and hours of research, study, and documentation produced by this individual, we offer this proclamation and thereby proclaim Mr. Norman Hollis as the official historian for Young County, Texas.
Wow. That's great.
God willing. Okay.
I would. Let me get my camera out. Whatever you want, whatever you feel comfortable doing, that's fine. This is a situation where I'm making sure I don't tell stories about y'all.
You got no stories on J.C. D.
I didn't know. You know, I probably have pictures.
How do y'all want a picture? I want one out.
Yeah.
We don't want. I want to get a copy. I'll let him hold this.
Come on over here, Norman.
Yeah, go this way. There's that. That window. I can't really.
I will, but I want to get a copy.
All the light on that side right there. Come more. This one, let him fix that.
That help any?
Uh, help a little bit.
We're going. There were no rules for this.
Listen, I don't know if I have that picture taken with the county commissioner's court. I may. Holy cow.
Did you get a? I want to go for your seat. Beat that light. Just like a lot of her.
Guys, I'm very honored. Thank you so much. I'm Norman Hollis. Thank you, sir. Official cameraman for the Grand Stair. That's right. I've been doing that for fifteen years.
In my ministry. This way.
Oh, right.
Yeah.
Sir. No, he knows. Um, I've held up minister to Eastside for nineteen years and I was a full-time minister to Eastside for twenty-four and a half years. So when I retired, I had been a full-time minister for forty-one and a half years.
Wow.
Served two churches. Um, since Stanford for seventeen years, then I came over here for twenty-four and a half years. Then I started a hobby of Young County, Texas history in nineteen ninety-eight. Part of it was because I was researching my wife's family. So my wife's family came to Young County in eighteen seventy-two after they rented the Indian Reservation. And my wife's great, great, great grandfather is W.C. Beckham. He started Beckham National Bank. So this is really bizarre. Grandparents are great-grandparents, her great-great-grandparents, and her great-great-great-grandparents are all buried in Young County. So now as a fun hobby, you know, meet a lot of people, you know. I've given a lot of talks before. Spoke at the Loving Community Center when they turned a hundred years old. I still remember your father-in-law inviting me to come speak and he said, you speak for fifteen minutes. That's all we want you to speak for. And I said, okay. And I said, well, when you wave your hand when that fifteen minutes is up, because I don't have a watch on. And forty-five minutes later, he waves his hand, you know. And I really think I got to talk to another twenty-five, thirty minutes. But sure appreciate it. Thank you so much. Thank you.
But I got hope there. I was afraid I wasn't gonna be able to get hope there. I'm aware of you as a scum.
Dr. is thinking about talking to other than him. That's what I'm saying.
I'm sorry. I just didn't want to miss part of why I had a chance.
We're not against people like Reggie.
Norman? You plan on staying around the community for a spell, I understand?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I'm not leaving Graham or Young County for that matter. I have two sons that live in the Northwest. One lives in Spokane and the other lives in Boise. And, you know, we're gonna travel some and things like that, but I've been cleaning out. When I cleaned out my office, now that's all that stuff's in my garage. And every day, my wife encourages me to kind of go through those boxes. And she mentioned that I needed to have an office somewhere else other than in my house. And I kind of alerted her to the fact that I actually had another office here in town that she had no idea that I actually had. There's that. That room is completely packed full of history stuff as well, so.
Has she gotten over that yet?
Huh?
Has she gotten over that yet?
Well, you know, I pretty much research history all the time. I mean, it never slows down. And, you know, one of the things that's really been gracious about county courthouse is through all the years with county clerks or auditors or even with tax assessor collectors, they've been very generous and allowing me, you know, go and look at their records and going down in the basement of the courthouse and transcribe. I've transcribed lots and lots of records. I mean, just tons and tons of records. But it's all really to tell the story because my opinion is if you don't tell the story, then someday those stories are gonna disappear. And, you know, Loving Cemetery, there's an old doctor there, Dr. Johnson. He's the first doctor of Alney and Loving, and he had a brother who was a doctor, Antelope. And then you go over to Newcastle and there's all the coal miners who, some of them have tombstones and some of them don't. And then you have these really curious people, you know. B.W. Cox is one of those characters who is an early school teacher at Belknap and he creates the Grape Harbor and he's buried in the Newcastle Cemetery. And then there's, um, there's a little boy in the Newcastle Cemetery who was tragically killed and his tombstone has kind of a cryptic message to it. And the people used to steal the tombstone and now it's, um, it's set in concrete and that's a story. That's a wonderful little story to tell. And then you go out to Elysville and Elyse de Long, who's the founder of Elysville, is buried out there and he has a story to tell. So it's not just people in Graham that have stories to tell. There's all kinds of stories of people that you tell. I mean, I've got a video on my Young County, Texas Facebook page of the Farmer Cemetery. And I basically highlighted six or eight years of the people who are the earliest burials in that cemetery. And it's got over seven thousand views. And, uh, but those are stories. Those are stories that can't disappear, that can't fade away. Recently, I was out where Fireman's Park is located and they're cleaning that up to create the park that they've been talking about since the nineteen fifties. And, um, you know, I'm gonna create a historical spot so that you can know what's in the county or actually know what's in that little nature walk. And people might actually find out what that big old rock structure is at Fireman's Park that everybody's really curious about. I mean, I know what it is, but, you know, that's always another story, bro.
Thanks, Norman.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Okay, next. The next item on. Public comments left, I guess, for the COVID reports. My last report that I have is there are ten thousand seven hundred and sixty-one tests that's been performed in Young County. Eighty thousand, two hundred and sixty-seven of those have been negative. Two thousand four hundred and seventy-four positive tests. And there were twenty pending as of about eight o'clock PM Friday the twenty-second. Total active positives in the county, total active positives that they have tested is in Eastside is one sixty-six. And those that reside in Young County are one thirty-eight. I had contact with Shane Cornell this morning, asking about the vaccine situation. And Graham Regional Medical Center is to receive two hundred vaccines today. And they're going mostly to their medical personnel and their family clinic people. Of that nature. And as far as he knows, that's the only delivery to Young County that will be made in this week, seven allocation. It's been seven weeks and this two hundred will make about twelve hundred if my numbers are anywhere near accurate, somewhere around twelve hundred vaccinations. Or back, um, twelve hundred doses of vaccine have been received since the one in Young County. Other islands here on the. Public comments section has received local tax from Ingleside Ranch LLC at eighty-two dollars sixty-nine cents. We have County Clerk's Association Texas Certificate of Completion for Ms. Kay Harden, Young County Clerk, to be reporting. Congratulations, Kay. So, do you pay to anything or did you just?
I just took care.
Or you just, you just forget it.
I do, Mr..
Do you learn anything new? Okay, congratulations. Also, by statistics, two thousand twenty, contemporary five-star award for Kay Harden. Five-oh? Well, that's great. And so that'll be recorded in our court minutes. And open meeting training confirmation certificate. Our new commitment under the case of Preston. Congratulations on that. Yes, sir. Is there any other announcements or presentations or items that might need to be mentioned? Let's move on. Next item is consider county court minutes from previous meetings. That will be January the eleventh, two thousand twenty-one. Are there any additions, corrections, or completions?
Some.
While in Rogers. Probably on the motion, Commissioner Rogers on the second, um, to approve those amendments as presented, all in favor?
Aye.
Five-oh. Okay, item number five is consider trace of financial support updates on street levies. Is there anything that you have here, Ann?
No, not today. I've been very busy trying to get all the WGs and all that stuff done.
Yeah, I noticed that.
Nothing for today.
Okay. Full action. Item number six, consider officer's budget amendment that's about payable. We have our sister-in-law, Ms. Martha Sumter. And, um, I guess, you know, for the good and please kind of come into the court on the altar and her convalescence, I guess we would say, on Sunday.
She's doing great.
Doing good.
She's doing really good. Um, she's not on the walker now. She's doing it under her own will. She was, I, I watched her and she didn't really even give to it. I was real proud of her. She said, "By night, it's bothering her a little bit." But she's further along quicker. So the road bog thing, apparently really is stacked up to what they say.
She hasn't went something on. Have you named surgery about two weeks ago?
Complete replacement.
A few?
A complete replacement. Didn't break?
Very good. Go ahead.
Okay. We have spent a hundred and twenty-five thousand four hundred and seventy and seven cents. Out of that, the general was eighty-nine, two hundred and forty-nine thousand eighteen cents.
How much? One twenty-five what?
One twenty-five four seventy oh seven. Pardon me?
No, Don.
Yes, sir.
There is a Don speed tank.
Some move on that.
New question? Now, motion about Commissioner Pruitt, second by Commissioner Preston to approve those vouchers payable as presented, all in favor? And that, four oh one, notice that, um, Mr. Holly would thank the discussion for voting on that, uh, for contract reasons. That act of five, by the way. Item number seven, discuss or consider road crossing permit for Valen Water Tribe Corporation for Salem Loop, pressing number one, Mr. Preston. I think, I guess we have, we have, uh, thank you. That, uh, I think is in connection with a development that's taken place out on Salem Loop. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
I think this is a ratification or an application to the city last week. And I'm not sure, but I believe it. Which is already completed?
Yes, sir.
We're looking for ratification of that for me.
It was cut, too.
What?
It was cut, too, right?
Yes, sir. It was cut.
Do you make that up yet?
Yes, I'm in motion.
I'll second.
How's that? We have a motion by Commissioner Preston, second by Commissioner Pruitt, right, uh, for a man's application is presented by Fort Valen Water Tribe Corporation for a road cut across Salem Loop.
Cut.
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 All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Item number eight is to ratify contract also. On that was, started execution of it a long time ago, back in October, September, I guess. But we just finally got all the fire departments signed up. And then whenever, what, President, ratified, we noticed that there was a couple of commissioners signatures missing also. So, we need, we need the execution of Mr. Preston and the execution of, uh, Mr. Pruitt.
And thirty.
And six.
And six.
And six.
Oh, my, did that just go up to this?
The left is out, didn't it?
That was a, I don't mind it, such a job, get that, uh, we lack one signature a long time. Fire departments. Then, did I hear? I didn't, I guess I,
Do you think we should ratify, uh, with us in the city again, you know?
We're talking about our,
Fire.
Contract.
Contract.
For fire department. I look at that, I think it's, we may look to do that. I guess, uh, we'll, I'll put that up, have that on the next agenda. I think it's one of those that are self-propelled, getting it anyway. But, yeah, I think I'd do a good, I'll just look that over.
Ratify again.
Or the ratification again. Okay, on the rural fire department? Can I say, well? Rogers? Uh, to ratify that contract, all in favor? Five-oh? You got that, Dave? Okay, item number nine is discuss, consider ending modifying subdivision regulations. We'll call this, link it in and make everybody a copy of that. But I think if you got access, I know you might have it on your computers. But it's on, it's on our, um, webpage. And I think it's, is it on, on this page? If you go to, I think it's under general. General rules and regulations. For general information.
I had to look at it a little.
Anyway, it's on, it's on the website, but, it's pretty standard. I don't think there's any, necessarily anything that we did differently than the statute required. It, um, had a permissive, the statute has permissive language in there for it. That indicates it gives the required authority to restrict or, and then, then the statute says, you know, in one aspect, I know that we discussed it a long time ago, probably when we ended these, whether or not we wanted all subdivisions planted or this particular instrument that we executed defers to the required provisions of the simplifying that's in the code. Uh, permissive in that language, it said, "The board may not." It doesn't say, "The board shall not, uh, do this or do that." But it's permissive in, "It may not." So, uh, I'm thinking that I've got an email sent to Mr. Allison to verify. And I'm thinking to drive that we can, uh, restrict that, um, further and move that, I can judge. I know that there's one subdivision going on as we notice with that. Fort Valen Water Connection, uh, road crossing. There could be, I don't, I guess, was that just one meter?
No, that was a, uh, tap into the water main. Bring the water.
Three inches across the house. Across the road. Mine across there?
Yes, sir.
So, it doesn't have a meter on?
Not at this point.
It's just natural where they do it from where everyone drove to their vision.
Yeah.
There's another one supposed to be coming in. I just heard Brewer today, calling them out in the chat.
I, I think we need to go through and, and look at some of the stuff because a lot of things have changed. Been doing real ice creams and they got some pretty good stuff. Kevin and I visited yesterday afternoon for a bit. And I asked him, I said, "Is there anything in here that, that y'all would need to change?" And he said, "Yeah, there's some things that we do need to change." And, uh, I feel like if you go to the people that's, that's happening too right now and has been for the last four or five years, they've experienced everything that you think you could ever experience. One of the things that they're using in that deal is, is that people have a water well system out in, in the country and it's in a subdivision. They got the minimum of what size lock that can be if you have a, a center system, which makes sense. And they cover a lot of things in that deal. They, they also cover what kind of roads they can use. They give examples of, of engineering planning on what kind of roads, what surface needs to be, the thickness. I mean, there's a lot of things that they got in there in their deal that makes sense. But the one thing I do like about theirs is, is they took in lumped their trailer houses and their subdivision rules all in one deal. And they look at, at the mobile homes. It doesn't matter whether it's one of the motorin', one that you pull, or a tri- or a trailer house, or a motorhome. It's all under one, one rule. Because there's, there's two things, they both dig water and they both have to deal with soup. So, that was the key thought in that part. Another thing I like they had in there is that they give themselves a checklist for the people that's doing this to know what to go to and make sure they go through the checklist and see they got everything.
Well, I think our rules are separate, but they're, they're both on, both of them are on our webpage.
Well, and his thought was, and mine too, is if you have it all under one heading, when you pull them rigs off, you don't get everything at one time. And that way you don't have to go back and try to look through there and say, "Well, I did that, this." Well, it's all under one set of rigs. They, they address the covert issue in this a whole lot. And did it three or four different areas if they addressed the covert issue. And the other thing they addressed a lot in there is, is looking at hundred-year flood claims or hundred-year flood period situations, fourteen-year flood situations. And I can see where that place out there where they're putting the subdivision needs to think about flood situations for the hills around it. So, that's another thing in that area.
What about like, once they establish a road there, let's say it's gonna be at a, you know, just say in it. And the, their, the rule says that they will make this road. And then in so many years, will we take over that road?
No. And, and, and White County, White County rules, they say that the county will not have care of that road.
Okay.
From the very beginning. But they say it needs to be up to this standard.
Okay.
So if somewhere down the road they decide to or something, they can do that. But that's one of the key rules, I think.
Okay.
But they, they don't address just, they address covesacks, they address eyebrows, uh, in roads. They address it all in that situation.
So, your, your statute, two thirty-two, uh, in the local government code, it, it at least, it addresses all those things in, in there. But we might have done some things that might have been, um, you know, we may have made a few more requirements than they actually have. That union with regard to roads, but they do need to be reviewed. I fully believe that. And one rule that's going to cause us, or maybe has a little bit, um, fine. I don't think there've been a, there has not been a subdivision plant since we established these rules, I don't believe, uh, with us. There's one out there that, that divided into fourteen or sixteen parts, um, with the intent to make that over ten rules spec that's in the code. It says, um, a, um, a plant, a county may not require a plant if the subdivision is more than ten acres, divided into two or more parts. Over ten acres, it might essentially be ten point one acres. Cannot have any roads, covesacks, common areas, um, valleys, parks, or any of those things. You know, and, and then we can require the road to come up to the standard that only the standard that we have there in the area. Uh, where if we have this white rock top road, that, that will be a top of fire that we require a subdivision on. I think that we can go over ten acres from there, you know. I'm not sure, but it sounds like this particular subdivision would have road. I don't know, I haven't seen it. I think that we could put in there that some individual that's gonna subdivide and have a piece of property like that would need to come to the court or, um, I guess you'd say to request that exemption and be granted that exemption for not plating. I kind of think that if it was on the right, those many parts, it, it probably should be plated, at least plated, you know, for, um, block one, two, three, four, five. Even if they come up to the county road for, um, something like this, if they go down one stretch of county road, you have the propensity to have fourteen or sixteen culverts down the road, you know, access need one of those parts of the road. So, if need be, and that probably would need be. So, we're gonna have all those issues to deal with.
There, there are minimums sized culvert in here is eighteen inches.
Yeah.
Is what we, what they hit.
I think that's, that's a statement on there. I don't think they'll approve anything else to make it inches or, like, it could be possibly fifteen-inch pipe which would carry as much of the water down to eighteen inches.
And you're talking about whether it's a box pond or a bridge or, or water?
The, the point of the subdivision regulation work, we're, sort of, it's not that we want rural controlled property, but we don't want things coming into the county that would be not attractive or that would be blight, if you will. And I would go to the region for them. So we won't have a colonial activity on the border. That's the real purpose of subdivision rule and regulations that flow below anybody. Not that anybody wants that or requires to do that, but, um, on end of, you know, property, um, I could prove plated subdivision is pretty, pretty expensive without, I think, without being that. But I feel that, I feel those things coming. But I feel that, I feel those things coming, coming, we've got properties moving here fast. All sizes of properties, from little small lots, five to ten acres, up to three twenty, six forty. And it's moving, if you don't want to sell it, better not put it on the market, because somebody will buy it. I don't know where all that money's coming from now. Land is moving.
Right.
Those people up there buying this down here.
In our, in our deals, that's all of the pertaining to the culverts.
Yeah.
One of those sections out there, and it's basically says the culvert design should be signed by a professional, the mapping listing of the size of each pipe, so be attached to the plat, and the developer will be responsible. But if you don't have some kind of, no kidding.
It's just vague.
It's very vague, you know, it's, there are a lot of openings in there here.
Well, we, we amend the rule, we'll obviously add our code policy and permit and, you know, I'm kind of concerned about that ten point one acres. It also, those things have to meet the one D one classification that the tax praiser district, and, and it does specify that counties may classify their subdivisions, and that's where it says that a county may not want to plant all of the subdivisions to come along out there, so that's what gets us permissive anyways. Either do that or undo that. I think that we can increase that acreage up to something that you'd be kind of considered as operations, agricultural operations, something like that. Twenty acres, point five acres. Where we did try to keep running into this problem. On each line completely, and then culvers there. And to also assist, I guess, in the classification for tax purposes. We can't, don't have a lot to do with that, but it does, it does state the tax code one D one classification in several of those provisions with the arms. It may not have to be planted.
So I have questions, you're telling me ten point one acres that joins the existing road, doesn't have to be planted?
Well, true. That's what the, that's what the code says, that's minimal environment, that's what our parents, it defers to the code, and to, it doesn't tell us that we have to, kind of indication, they, I think they, they should come in here and request that exemption. They at least ought to have a survey on it, and have a block called lots, even if they don't have any road streets, if they have, if they have one road in it, or access to those properties, then it's going to classify a subdivision, and they need to be planted.
If they all come to the existing road, it doesn't have to be planted, it's just more approved?
Well, it states that it may not, may not require planting.
It's up to the court to make that decision.
Yeah. It doesn't say shall not require planting, it says it may not require planting, if the county classifies it that way. We've just kind of deferred to that. Haven't, haven't, haven't worried about it since two thousand and seven.
When's the last time the legislative member was?
About ten. In the vision to a key.
Everybody get to think about that, reading that subdivision rule of regulations, well, I suppose.
County, county term.
In ideals. What we will, what I'm afraid that we will have to do is, we will have to publish that in paper, and I'm not sure, we may have to have a public hearing, probably work in conjunction with a meeting, but I think that we'll have to have a public hearing on that. When we do
You know, we, we have these rule regulations, not to be hard on these people, but it's, it's not for now, it's for the future.
Yeah, and, and to keep, to keep time to track, if somebody wants to come over here.
That's right. And, and make the, make sure that the contract is done as much as possible.
Okay, any other on that? We'll continue that on the, the gentleman. I'm not a hundred percent sure about the public hearing, but I'm thinking that that's what we'll have to amend the rule and regulations.
Bob Bash is probably one of the
Excuse me?
Bob Bash is probably one of the most worked ones.
Yeah. I'm sent that boot down, down there, so it's, you know, he'll be aware. Okay. We're going to take the wax on that, and we will make that a stand item until we resolve what amendments we're going to make in. Item number ten, discuss consider Young County Child Welfare Board recommendation for Rebecca Phillips to become a new member. We have two or three other places besides that. This place will we've got six, thirteen members and three alternate members. And I think this will pretty well fill, there may be one spot left open on on the primary board. I know there's at least two, maybe all three of the alternate positions are open, alternate positions were placed in there, approved by the board, approved by this court, that have the alternate positions to facilitate together in a forum, so they can act as this. I don't know if any of you know Rebecca Phillips, I don't personally know her.
Who's the inspired term that she's taking the place of?
Oh, I'll have to go get my list, she's, she'll take the place, I think she takes the place in group one, I'll have to go get that.
That's right.
I'll have to go get that, anyway. If, if you'd like for me to, I mean, it's an uninspired term, of course she'll be coming up in, complex, she'll be coming up in twenty-two. Again.
It has been, been on there a long time. I'll take a motion, we accept Ms. Phillips.
I'll like. No second to that.
A crew recommendation. Rebecca Phillips is a member of a member of Young County Child Welfare Board, all in favor? Any vote? Five oh. Okay, item number eleven is discuss consider burn restrictions. We decided we found wet spail, kind of wet spail, didn't mine open, but we're wet, we're in the middle of the country. Been having a pretty temp here during that spail, I don't believe. Okay. We'll cut all this technology off, have a little break. And then we'll end the session. Uh, something, you look at
I'll give that.
You're all in there?